... cents, approve an expense warrant from seven one nineteen for two hundred ninety-three thousand and eight dollars and twenty-nine cents, and approve a payroll warrant for five eighteen nineteen for one hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and one cent. And approve an expense warrant for seven nineteen, excuse me, seven nine nineteen for nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents.
You have that motion?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then it'll like a motion to approve selectmen's minutes from six twenty-five nineteen.
You have a motion to that effect?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have acknowledged some minutes and reports from other departments. We have the cultural council minutes from June third, twenty nineteen. Fire department monthly report for June twenty nineteen, and EMS monthly report for June twenty nineteen.
You have a motion to acknowledge.
All in...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to congratulate firefighter Stephen Buttnick for thirty-eight years on the force, and Matthew Graves for twenty years, and thank them for their service and all those years, and continue to have them around for quite a few more years after that.
Congratulations.
And then we have some announcements. The Brookfield Ecumenical Pantry is accepting donations at the Merrick Public Library, whether the library is open or Saint Mary's Church at Fort Howard Street during distribution hours, Wednesday nine thirty to eleven, and Saturday nine thirty to eleven a.m. Do we have any other announcements?
Okay.
Okay, I have a little thing I'd like to say tonight. Okay. It has come to my attention, as chairman of the board, that there are many instances where town departments and town res- uh, excuse me, instances within the town where town residents are giving out personal phone numbers for town employees, and are not following the proper procedure of who to contact with a question or a problem. All of us would appreciate it if someone has a financial problem, the first person to contact is the town accountant. If the town accountant cannot resolve the situation, she must pass along to the town treasurer. Please do not contact the selectmen or other departments individually. This simply creates chaos because the proper department had should be handling the problem, and the select board should be the absolute last result. Going forward, there will be many changes to town departments and policies and procedures so that we can streamline and become a more efficient municipality. As we all know, due to our previous accountant problems, we all need to be flexible and move the town forward in a positive direction. And we need, all need to have patience and understanding and be willing to accept these changes. Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, first thing on our agenda is a storage license for Tassie Fuel. And Mr. Tassie is with us if he would like to come up.
Grab a seat, chair. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Great to have you in town.
Karen, you have the application?
She has.
Yeah, I have all right here.
So essentially, I have purchased the Brookfield Motor Building, and I would like to have a special permit in the planning board's... Which we have a hearing on the seventh of August for that, to change, not changing the use, it's still a building, a building A business, but, okay, you got a plan already. So let's just share that one, Beth, with me. If you look on the property, so the existing building is about a ten thousand square foot building. It was used as a car dealership over the years. We are gonna not use it as a car dealership again. It'll be a maintenance facility for my own vehicles.
Oh, great.
Storage for parts and materials for plumbing and heating business. And but my real reason for being here tonight is to get permission to store... There's already fuel oil and waste oil in the building that has been used, which we want to continue to do. We want to be able to store, I want to build a sixty thousand gallon propane bulk facility. That's two thirty thousand gallon tanks. They would be to the right of the property. Their picture on there is the round cylinders to the right. These will be in your paperwork tonight, Linda, that you have. There's a application for the license, there's the license paperwork, and then there's an application to the state fire marshal. This has to be approved by the state fire marshal after it gets approved by the town. So if the town gives me permission, I have to go to the state fire marshal to get it approved. It will be built in accordance with the state fire marshal, which is CMR one forty-eight, and there's all kinds of rules in there for that. I brought a picture of a bulk plant from, that's up in New Hampshire.
Pretty.
That would be fenced like it is there. And that has two thirty thousand gallon tanks, which are the front two tanks. There's a sixty behind it. I'm not looking to do that, I'm looking for just sixty at this time. And then, in addition, on the permit, we've, the license, we've requested storage for an additional thirty thousand gallons of storage, propane storage for homeowner tanks, the one twenties, five hundreds and stuff, and it includes tanks, bobtails, in other words, the trucks I deliver with, so that I'll be filling off of this. And then possibly down the road, I may have my own transport where I'll bring, use it to bring propane in. But those will be stored on the property in the same as a moving vehicle, a delivery vehicle. And then on that license, it also, we listed the other fuels that would be stored in the building, which is specifically heating oil to heat the building, and waste oil to heat the building. So that's the license. And then, in the back of this, you see a proposed area that's dotted out, which, right now, we have pellet sales in North Brookfield, which are currently now stored on a leased piece of land that's owned by the railroad in North Brookfield. And because they're working on a rail trail up there, they're, they're gonna eventually want to turn that into parking, so I'm gonna lose that lease in about two years, two and a half years. So, 'cause they don't want to renew it, we mean. So this is another important reason, so I'm gonna move the pellet cells. What I want to do is move the pellet sales down here. This really, that's not really considered a fuel, and that doesn't need to be on that license. It's not...
More an informational courtesy.
It's an informational thing, and that's, and I needed to have it on there for the special permit that I'm applying for.
Is there any sequencing issue with us reviewing the license first where the permitting isn't complete yet?
So there's, I talked to my engineer that's gonna, that will design it and actually applies to the state. So the steps that are required are, you need to get the license in the town, okay? And then the paperwork for the state, which there's an application in there that needs to be signed saying that you guys have given me the license?
Yep.
And then that goes in, and then they approve all of the setbacks and the rules and all that. And then, if, normally you would, I would get the special permit first, but I feel confident in talking to the planning board.
Okay, so you've been working with them already?
I've worked with them already, I've met with them twice, and we actually have a hearing on August seventh. So the planning board, when I initially met them, told, I told them what I was planning, what I would like to do with the property, and would they be opposed to doing it? Because if you're not interested in me coming here and doing this, then I won't buy the property. I'll keep looking somewhere else. So I got kind of a, I didn't get a okay, but I got, you should go ahead and continue to look at that. So then I did the paperwork and the background checks and the stuff for the property to make, to make a decision to buy it. I wasn't actually gonna buy it until the, until I had the special permit. But because of the possibility of environmental that could be on this for what it was used for in the past, Doug and Diane were just ready to unload it, and I bought it really inexpensively. And so I bought it, and I'm gonna, I took the risk. I'm gonna, that whatever cleanup has to happen, I will do.
That you'll take care of it.
In the next couple of years.
Okay.
But my goal is just to get the propane. So in talking to my engineer, you get the license first.
Okay.
You apply for the special permit, you start your engineering, you get state fire marshal approval. And then, once the fire marshal gives you approval, that, those can coincide together. If I go through, I'm gonna spend the money on the engineering at this point.
Yep.
And if I spend the money on the engineering and get the, and then the special permit doesn't go through, that's money I wasted. So the special permit is kinda, usually wait for that, but I feel like after I've met with everybody and what I propose to do with the property, ultimately, I have an office in Southbridge and in North Brookfield, and ultimately, I would like to move the two offices into one place. And this is really central to my service area. And it's a good location, and both of my two properties, North and Southbridge, North and South, supposed to be, are kind of landlocked. So this gives me an opportunity for a little bit of growth. Both buildings are two-story buildings, and I have inventory on the second floor and offices on the first. And so this just gives me a lot of, an area to be all on one floor, and it's, and it's a good location. And I'd really like to be in Brookfield. I think it's a great place to be.
And we welcome you.
And I'm closer to home from here. It's a shorter distance to both, take here than both places.
Nice.
So...
We welcome business to Brookfield.
Yeah, and it brings business to Brookfield, which is a good part. And the business that I'm doing will require very little water. It requires town water because of the fire conditions, but it doesn't, but there, because there's no town sewer.
But it's not a high use, yeah.
And there's no town sewer, so a septic system on property, I'm not gonna have, you know, it's like a restaurant where there'd be a lot of stuff being going in and out. So we're not gonna be washing trucks there, or doing, you know, not major, I mean, there might be rinsing trucks and stuff, but we're not salting stuff off, but we're not gonna be doing any major cleaning or anything. There'll be, there won't be any floor drains, all the floor drains are covered up in that building because they used to go to drain outside through a drywall, which we'll probably find contamination with the results of that, and we'll clean that up. So.
Excellent.
Awesome.
So that's kind of a...
Great news.
Brief summary of my plans, and what I really am looking for tonight is to get the license, because I need the license to go to the state fire marshal.
Yep.
We have all three here.
I'm glad this worked out.
Me too.
Excellent.
And already here, the application for propane things has already been signed off by the fire chief.
Yep.
So he's signed that off. All right, so I would like to, a motion.
Motion to sign.
Sign a license and the application for construction and installation.
You have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Also, I'm probably the only one that has to sign on this one.
Yeah, excellent.
Do you guys need to have, does anybody need a map of any of this?
I would like one of them, if you don't mind.
You can have one.
Thank you.
Well, I brought one, so they could have one if they wanted one. If all goes well on August seventh, we'll, and we get the permitting from the state. Takes anywhere from thirty to forty-five days. So I'm hoping to have that shortly after we get that, and soon as I have that, then I can...
So I don't, only, as Linda's signing away, just one hint for you. Your bulletin, your new billboard, so at Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, at Halloween, that bulletin board ends up to be posted with some pretty, has over the last two years. And we've been working, we worked with the billboard company to change the billboard because they put some gory stuff up towards the school. So, just an FYI.
Oh, so the billboard, the one that's, that's been there, was there before the bylaw said that you can't have a billboard in Brookfield?
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, it's pre-existing use.
Those pre-existing use, so we're hoping it falls down someday soon.
Well, as long as they don't put the gory thing up there for the kids.
Also, this, this is gonna block some of it, some of the view of it.
That'll be good.
Nice. Well done.
At least from the west.
Yeah, exactly.
You won't, my, my goal is to use the tanks after they're in, is to use the tanks as areas, it'll kind of be a billboard for me, in the sense that I will have signage on the side of the tank.
Well, quite honestly, I'd like to find another company or business that would like to do what you're doing, consolidating into a central location.
This, this location's really good. I sat in the front showroom of that building at length waiting for people.
So is she gonna take these with her tonight?
Doing some paperwork, waiting, you know, and I see stuff drive by, and I see the activities. There's been a lot of concerns about, you know, what about the propane, and is it safe? You know, it's, a propane tanker is safer than a gasoline tank. The walls are so rigid and solid.
Could you come in tomorrow morning and get these, because we only have copies of these?
Yeah, I don't need them, I'm, I'm not gonna be around tomorrow, 'cause I'm leaving in the morning on a seven o'clock flight.
Okay.
So I'll be gone, but I can have somebody else get them.
Well, then why don't you wait until Thursday, 'cause I'm not gonna be in tomorrow, but my clerk will be in, but just because I'm familiar with it, just send someone in Thursday, okay?
Yep, yeah, I just want them, sooner I can get them, the better, 'cause I'm gonna mail them. I have to mail the original to my engineer with an original drawing, not a copy or anything.
Yeah, well, I guess that way it could be the original.
So I need the originals to go...
We just wanna make sure we have a copy in the folder and...
Yep, I'm fine with that, so I'll have somebody come Thursday.
Do you have one of those, I think we do have a map in there too.
Yes.
Yeah, the map, yeah, the map's in there too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Next on our agenda is Mr. Eaton. Welcome.
Thank you for your time. I don't know if this is the appropriate form, but I just wanna take a few minutes to compliment the select board and Karen on extraordinarily well-done job on the annual town report.
Yes.
I think the layout, the appropriate use of photographs, the well-written articles, Karen, about Linda's forty years, dedication to the town, the Deena site, the Art J report, all really well-done. Going to the town meeting, sometimes we get confrontational, but there's a lot of good things happening in the town of Brookfield. And this was a good vehicle to promote some of those, and I hope you guys continue to promote those good things. And again, thank you for a good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you very much. And Karen does an excellent job with it, and her writing is great, she does a really good job. And thank you, Karen, for coming in. Next here is to sign the Trident Insurance FY twenty renewal.
Motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion on this? It's gone up, I think, what is it, it's gone?
Four percent.
Four percent in increase. But I think Mr. Joseph said next year that he will probably...
He's gonna try, but he's gonna see what he can do to get up a lower bid next year. Although he told me he was retired in a couple of years, so he's not next year. I think next year might be his last year, I don't know.
Now, Karen, was that the same amount that we voted at town meeting? Or are we gonna need to make an adjustment at the fan?
I think it was built in, the insurances he gave, whatever, I think he said, whatever percentage we always build in, we always ask him before we go to the, to the advisory board.
They didn't get a chance to double check the budget against that, so...
Well, it's a one percent, it's all the chances, it's not just one.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I was gonna check, was...
No, 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 I just...
Yeah, we did vote it.
Yeah, we voted for it.
Yes, we did.
No, I think that, we had put the adjustment in on that already.
Yeah, we did, but what it, what it does is when we go to the advisory board, the general insurance doesn't just include Trident, it includes other insurance too, so...
The next one on our agenda is to sign the Farm Brewery and Entertainment License. And this is for the Farmers Brewery Pouring Permit and Entertainment License.
And the state approved that.
And the state's approved it, and this is to Oak Home Brewing Company, LLC. Andrew Woodward is the manager, and it is going to be on eighty slash eighty-one Lake Road here in Brookfield.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Two successes, aye.
Yes, this is another, another thing. This is, this is wonderful, I think, to have businesses wanting to come into town.
Gives Treehouse a little run for their money.
Okay, the next one is from, it's a Revised Austin Design Amendment for Accessibility and Alterations Contract.
Yes, and town council looked it up, and they wanted, they thought it should have a different signature page, so that's what it is.
Okay.
So, fifteen hundred exodus. So I'd like permission for all of us to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is to sign the CDBG FY seventeen invoice number nineteen and FY eighteen invoice number five.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of us, um...
And it was a public hearing this evening to talk about FY nineteen, extra monies that might be available to do things like continuing with Finney, and to, to look at rehabbing housing, and possibly to do some additional work on South Palm Beach.
That's good to hear.
Okay, did I catch it?
This one is to sign the, it's for one thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Okay, and this is for, this is for invoice nineteen for Brookfield FY seventeen, and it's the same amount.
And FY seventeen has about thirty-eight thousand dollars to be spent.
And then the last one here is for FY eighteen, and this was invoice number five, and in the amount, it's four thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I'm gonna put the date on there on your...
Oh, I'm gonna put the date on.
Gotcha.
Okay, the next one here is municipal transfers. This one is from the treasurer, and she'd like to take from treasurer's wages to put into clerk wages the amount of two thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents, and also from treasurer's wages for the consultant, and it's two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. And I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought all of us had assigned this.
They're using a different form, they're using a, one internal to their financial company.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah. I did have a question related overall to municipal transfers. Do we need to, because of the closeout of the year being, like July fifteenth being, I think, Tuesday, do we want to hold a joint meeting Monday with advisory for any last-minute transfers that may come in between today and the end, so that we guarantee that both boards can actually get them approved prior to the fifteenth?
Fine with me.
If we have to, yeah, we'll have to find out.
Yeah, could, could you send an inquiry to Stephen, see if he can...
The treasurer's office did send out, I mean, the council office did send out a, an email and put it in everyone's boxes that the deadline was yesterday in order to get everything in. But yeah, we can find out if there's any strays. Why don't we, in order to get our meeting first, before...
Well, my thought was get it on the, you know, get, if we get it on the calendar, then if there are, then if there is anything...
You can always cancel what you wanna do.
We can always cancel it, yeah.
Want to do it Monday, see if they're available, do you know?
I have no idea. I didn't, I didn't reach out yet, I just, it dawned on me.
Now, what if they meet again, because this has to be signed also by...
See, I don't know if they even have a meeting scheduled for this week, so they may need one for Monday anyway. And then if we have a meeting and do it as a joint meeting, that way if anything comes up between now and then, it can get taken care of.
Do you wanna do it six or six-thirty?
Six.
Six or...
Oh, six? Yeah, if you wanna do it at six, we can do it at six.
Can we do six-thirty? Because they usually do a seven o'clock, and their, their committee usually does seven o'clock, 'cause a bunch of them work.
Okay, so six-thirty.
Six-thirty. And these are ones from the accountant. Uh, this is for, she took from Tri Valley Crisis to the MediCar. It was a hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then, call, call expense? What is this, our C-O-L-L software?
Collector expense.
Collector?
Yeah, collector expense.
Collector, okay. She took from the collector's expenses for the collector's software, forty cents. And this is the, now whose salary is this? PB salary?
Let me see, if I can read it right. It says PB salary, a PB salary and PB expense, I don't know.
Planning board salary to the planning board expense.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
That's what it is, Sharon? Oh, okay.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
We went over budget because of the bylaw.
Oh, that's right.
Having to consult on council and those back and forth.
Okay. Okay, so on the, they took it from the planning board's salary to go to the expense. It's one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. And then the municipal gasoline to the municipal heating fuel, it was five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, and I'd like a motion to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have another one also from the accountant. Uh, she's taking all of these out of the shade tree expense. Municipal property, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Municipal utilities, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Gas expense, fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. Wiring inspector, four cents. And ZEO salary is four cents. So I'd like a motion to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second.
If we've come that close, that's great.
Oh, yes, she is, she's doing a very good job. I'm very pleased she's with us. We're gonna remind her, Karen, she has to sign this, you know, she comes in on Thursday.
So speaking of the finance meeting that we had the other day, speaking of forms, so that was one of the cautions that I did give them, is to make sure that the, as the distribution of the finance, the updated finance policy goes around, that we make sure we get the latest forms.
Yeah. Okay, next we're on to wage authorization. So the personnel board met today, and they signed all the wage authorizations.
So motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
Okay, so everything that's in there's been through personnel?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's signed. Do we all like, wanna take a... Okay, so stack, sign. Do, do we all like, wanna take a stack and start signing?
Yeah, then we can pass.
Yeah.
Okay. Stack.
That's a stack. That looks like a stack.
Stack.
There's another stack.
All right, go for it.
Some of these I see, like, the library ones, they have to be signed by the trustees, so they'll have to.
Well, after they've signed the original ones, so it's back to the originator anyway, so then she'll have to.
Okay. Wait a minute here. We don't have to sign the li, oh, I'm, I made a mistake on these.
Barely.
Just the trustees, I guess, have to sign for the library.
Hello?
Is it okay, is it okay with you if I change this, uh, a date for you? Okay.
Karen?
What?
I noticed here that the tr, I made.
It's a year and a century.
The trustees have to sign, so I, I thought we all signed, so I made a mistake, I signed some of them.
I guess 'cause it was the seven, nine, nineteen.
Okay.
I didn't wanna change it without your permission.
You have to tell them. Okay. Oh, okay.
You're quicker than I go.
I think I got the smallest stack.
You want some more, Bethy? Sure.
I was gonna say, we could also just cheat and only put two on each one, 'cause that's a quorum. Madam Chair, we have a question in the.
What, Sharon, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
Are the wage authorizations, are those just for new employees?
No.
No, that's for everybody.
Okay, then I guess I just filled the memo I got. I thought they were just for new employees, there was no hint on the, the email that it was for, but the form said new or change employees, so you'll get one, you'll get one from planning board, I guess.
Oh, well, life in the fast lane. Oh, is there a stack yet? Oh, yes.
These can go all stacked together.
It's a human night. Human night.
It is a humid tonight.
Oh, this is a, this is a different form, I don't know if we already handled this, or? I left sideways, the one that's the library trustees to sign.
So I'll get caught?
Right. I'll even put it in the back for you.
Yeah, I have some library trustees, too.
This is just a copy, I know you signed it, but the original's not, I don't know if you want to send me one of those.
Let's, yeah.
I'm gonna leave these in front.
Oh, that's interesting. So this is something we probably need to address at the next, um, town meeting. It's, uh, it looks like apparently, uh, there's no, there was no change in, uh, fire chief's salary indicated on the budget. I wonder if we missed that with the advisory?
That's a good question, is that?
So.
Have to check on it.
Yeah, let's, let's go back.
I think he would've caught it, though, I mean, I'm, like, he's surprised if he did.
Well, the, the salary changes were very last minute in the budget sheets. So he might, he might not have seen it.
Okay, so, well, didn't he fill out, he filled out his wage authorization, didn't he?
Right, it doesn't show, it doesn't show before and after, but he did note that it was level funded in the budget, so I don't know if he added two and a half percent or not.
I don't know.
The way the firefighter ones are done, they don't have the, the prior amount.
Okay.
So let's, let's just look into it. Please.
I'm sure the firefighter ones were, because minimum was twelve, and then he's got the sixty-one, he gave him the two and a half.
Understood, it's just that the annual salary indicated for the chief, there's a note on the sheet that says that it was level funded at the town meeting, so I don't know if that's an adjustment or just an authorization for the year.
Oh, that's odd.
So let's just double-check it, I don't have my copy of the budget with me, so. Do you know if we ever heard anything back from Ann Goby's office about raising the population of the towns that are defined as small towns that allow for holding multiple positions? Okay. So we probably need to reach out to them again.
I thought Mike was, was looking into that before.
Okay. That'd be great. I think all those are all done.
Is Lois gonna be in tomorrow?
Yes, she will.
Okay, I think I'm gonna come up tomorrow morning and finish signing all of these.
Okay.
Yeah. I think if we've got two on them.
I just signed for you.
Hmm?
What's that?
Scratch my name.
Okay.
What did you say, Beth?
I was gonna say, if we have two and we've done the vote, I don't think it's a issue.
No, so I'll come up and sign them in the morning.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Two on Sunday.
We'll take this one, maybe, separate. Okay. We don't have anything under others, do, do you have anything?
I will.
I do, but go ahead.
Uh, just, uh, real quick, uh, that there will be a meeting tomorrow morning at the beach between, um, uh, fisheries and, and, uh, good, fisheries and wildlife, there we go. And talking about, uh, the agreement, and talking about handicap access and other improvements to the beach and how that might come about.
Okay.
Boston.
Yeah, do you have something?
Uh, just a couple things. Was it, did I miss a meeting, and did the Board of Health come to us about disposing of the excess building that they had down at the, uh, transfer station? 'Cause I think they disposed of it on municipal, but I'm, I don't recall us ever taking a vote either to dispose of it or to accept the bid. So I think the building's already gone and the check, I think, has been turned over to the treasurer, but I don't know if it's, if it's recorded under the right accounting and such. So I would, wanted to check with you all if you recalled anything that maybe I had forgotten.
Nope.
I didn't know anything.
Okay, so do you?
Good that it's gone away.
It's, it's great that it's gone away, since they had made the decision not to use it. I think it's fabulous that it was disposed of on municipal and probably following all of the standard protocols, but I just wanna make certain that, um, you know, we're following the right procedures, right? Um, and my understanding is the selectmen are really the ones that authorize the disposal of excess, the determination of and disposal of excess property. Um, so I, I, I would like to make a motion that we send a, a, you know, a formal or semi-formal inquiry to the Board of Health and say, hey,
What was the practice?
What, what was used, how are the funds recorded, and, and where are they getting deposited into, rather than as like a general receipt, um, for the transfer station, that I don't know if there's any, anything special we need to do with regards to those funds.
Go ahead, we'll do that, Karen.
I'll write you a little note, and if you want, um, if you're coming in tomorrow, you can just ask them, or, well, they can write a letter if you might want.
Either way, it's up to you, you just, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna do the inquiry without checking with y'all, so.
I would just ask the quite very, very, what procedure was used.
Yeah, wanna write that down?
I am, I'm writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I'll be up tomorrow morning.
So, um, it's great that the treasurer provided us the tax title information. I would like to understand more about where we're at with the properties, 'cause this gives us kind of like the, the volume, but I don't know which ones are actually in the land court and which ones aren't, and I'm, I would think that either the treasurer's office, I would hope that we don't have to go to KP to know which ones are in land court. We should have records to that effect from the last time that Keith did it, so if we could get some sort of annotation of these, um, I, I would be really appreciative of that.
Okay, so you wanna know which ones are in land court?
Yeah, which ones are in land court, which ones do we have to decide what our next steps are?
Okay.
And then, you know, do, do we know when we're gonna make those decisions about what the next steps are with the ones that we've, we've got?
And then, um, if you saw the one from Brenda, that she gave.
I did not, I only saw the two from the.
Yeah, Brenda, and one of them, um, it's supposed, I got one from Brenda, and one was from the church.
Well, it looks like they printed the same report, one of them's the committed balance and one's the tax title balances, and I'm not quite.
Well, 'cause, well.
So I think, I think when it, it goes, I think either one of them can print a different, it's like a different view form, but, uh.
'Cause Brenda, Brenda and I were going through them, and a lot of them, like, where the properties are, the taxes that are owed on them is so much, and the value of the property isn't even, the value is probably even a quarter of what is owed, don't worry, it's probably.
And we should consider writing off at least those, what my focus is and will continue to be is the high, the high.
High value ones.
High value ones, our meeting tonight was about the most high-value one and what we're gonna do about it.
Yep. Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, so, yeah, maybe, maybe if we could have a, an annotated report.
Yeah.
Of, you know, what, what do we need, what's next steps?
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be good. And again, it doesn't have to... As we did this the last time, we kind of put things in three buckets.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that was helpful that we focused on the top two. Top two tiers.
Right.
And if it's something we can do, great.
So, and then, I did get contacted by... And to your point, I get earlier it said, you know, to contact, you know, accountant or the treasurer if there's like an issue and not necessarily go through the selectman. I did have somebody contact me about an issue with their pay, one of the folks from the schools for summer pay.
Yeah, she told me about that today.
Right. And I did... I forwarded it to the... Both the treasurer and the accountant because really the... I mean, for payroll stuff, usually the first stops the treasurer, not the accountant for all intensive purposes. But I hadn't heard anything back, which, you know...
Well, I think she handled it. It's all been taken care of. And like she said, they came in, like one of them came in on the holiday. The note... When she got the emails, the emails were sent... One of the emails was sent on July 4th to her and she didn't see it until she came back in.
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just, you know... In fact, I think one of them was sent probably like Sunday, actually.
Yeah, she said one was Sunday and then... No, she took care... She's taken care of that and she's talked to the person.
Oh, great. Okay. So, it was just a one-off? It wasn't like a whole like payroll run or anything like that? Okay, great.
She talked to me about that today.
Great.
Okay. Anything else here on the other? Okay, we're on correspondence. This is from Charter. They have a change of their hearing that they were having. And the date of the hearing change was scheduled for July 24th. Will now be at 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, August 7th in Hearing Room 1E at 100 Washington Street, Boston, Mass. The next one here is from... Oh, this is the one? Okay. And now we have also... We have an invitation from the Hardwick New Braintree Police Department. It said that, here, they're having an open house at the New Braintree Dispatch for its 25th anniversary on June 17th, 2019. They did this already.
What's the date?
It says June 17th, 2019. But they were inviting... Okay, all right.
Really?
But that was... No, that was the anniversary. As we go on further here, and they're inviting the selectmen and residents to an open house on July 20th, 2019 at 10 o'clock until 2:00. And they will just have displays for all 10-town emergency services. They'll have food vendors and activities for the children. And that is from Kevin M. Landine. He's the board of overseers for Hardwick New Braintree Police Department. And that's all for correspondence.
And with that, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At 7:23, 22.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.